Okay, good evening. I'd like to go ahead and call our January 3 PM meeting to order. And the first thing we have on our PM meetings are the citizen forum, where anyone can come and speak on any issue that's not on the agenda. So if you're here tonight to speak on the Brandy Station Technology Zone issue, just note that it's later one in the agenda under 4.02. But anyone can come and speak during the citizen forum on any issue again that's not on the agenda. We just ask you to give your magisterial district that you live in, your name, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. And I'll go ahead and open that citizen forum now. And we have three signups. And the first one that signed up is Wayne Brown.
Good evening. Wayne Brown from Stevensburg. I'm in the septic business. The county has an ordinance, I believe, to pump the septic tanks every three or four years. Where do y'all want us to take it? Anybody? No answer?
We don't usually, or we don't comment on any of the comments made by the citizens during the citizen forum, Mr. Brown.
Don't, so we can ask questions and don't get an answer?
[laughing]
Well, take note of that. We've got no place to dump it. The town won't take it half the time. So as soon as you find out, let me know. And there's an article in the paper today. Chairman Gary Deal, who last year supported the controversial green-lighted Amazon data center campus on farmland along Route 3 in the village of Stevensburg, said that was a special case. He argued Amazon would build its two data centers and a substation on a four-lane highway with other industrial uses nearby, including a quarry. I reckon that's you. "We know if we approve it, that would motivate more users to come to our tech zones on McDevitt Drive and Lover's Lane," Deal said at the meeting. That's what we tried to tell you all before you pass that. That's where they ought to be. That's what they were made for. And you completely discarded all of that and put it on farmland. None of you ought to be up here. This is not representative government. So you don't have to comment on that either.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Francis Updike.
Good evening and a Happy New Year, everybody. I hope you guys, I'm Francis Updike, Cedar Mountain District. Contrary to what just taking place, I think you guys did a hell of a job last year. Wish you the same this year. I'm just here to update you on the situation out of Pearl Sample and AG. You know, I came to see y'all and I met with the school board. I did learn a couple of things interesting when I met the school board. That's why I just talked to Mr. Underwood. Three members of the school board said, yeah, that was on our agenda. And John Coats was the last person. He was supposed to work with VDOT, and he lost the election. And I said, well, what happened? Did he fall off the radar? And the response was, not good. I didn't think. They had other priorities and et cetera. So I thought, wow, isn't that interesting? But I also met with the, some of the faculty and staff. And with all the crazy stuff you hear in the news, one interesting comment, and I don't reveal names, just said, every time there's a national tragedy, we think about it because we feel trapped back here. But if we can't, we have to do our jobs and just suck it up and hope and pray for the best. But I think we can do better than that. I think I read you the audit that you had. The county's in great shape thanks to your management, contrary to everybody's comments. But it's a thankless job that you have. You've heard that from day one that you've been sitting down. I know Mr. Rosenberg has been hearing it longer than anybody else. In fact, Mr. Rosenberg was here when Pearl Sample and AG were built. And I don't know what those years were, but way back when. I was back here and I knew it was happening, but I didn't pay that much attention. We don't look back, we look forward. I read your audit. The county's in good shape. There's funds available and popping up various places. Maybe there's even some COVID funds that lay around. Other people find excuses to use it for something else. I see where Little Fork got some money thanks to Spanberger's efforts or whomever's. Hey, there's some avenues out there. And I think with, and I was speaking with Mr. Bates, you just drive down 29 now, that Laurel Street extended. Wow, we're gonna have some more houses than after all of Friendship Way on both sides. I understand there's gonna be something coming into works. Maybe it's a good time now to expend some political capital and get something for proffers. And there's some money to get something done. I actually, after I met, before I met with the school board, I went out there and drove down back to the, the Culpeper. It's still a Baptist home to me. And drove all the way down to the cornfield. And it'd be almost a perfect line to get a little right away from those folks, come out to Friendship Way. And you come out on 299. When 299 was built, the whole idea was to eliminate traffic in front of the schools. You've got a nice crossover. I mean, there's some feasibility. I'm not an engineer. But anyway, I think anything we could do is improve that situation. Sad to say, there are a lot of crazy people in the world. And I don't have that much experience in, let's say, none in law enforcement or first responding. But it just hit home last night with the football situation, the difference it made in timing of having the proper help there for that individual. It's the first comment I've ever heard from a doctor saying, well, we were thankful that he's in critical condition. Thankful for critical? I guess so, versus being not here. And I just thought of the speed with which you could get in and out, especially AG Richardson in the back to get fire, rescue, whomever. Law enforcement will make all the difference in the world. And I would just say, I would encourage you, if you hadn't been out that way for a while, don't go out in the morning when they're getting there or the afternoon when picking up. Just drive through that loop to see what the difficulty is in getting back to AG Richardson. There's 22 schools, there's 1,240 students. There's over 200 permits for cars picking children up for AG alone. And I don't know what the faculty staff is, but it's a lot of people that would be back there. And you could just imagine the chaos if there's a fire emergency and heaven forbid any of the things that take place. Too many crazy people in the world, so you gotta prepare it. It won't prevent it, but if we can minimize it and save one child or one teacher's life, then it's worth it. So I know you guys will give it proper thought and consideration. And I'll only show up when I have something new to add. Thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next up is Jennifer Wender.
Hello, it's Jennifer Wender. And I'm the new executive director for the Germana Foundation. And of course, you all know that the Germana Foundation owns and operates Salubria, which is in the Stevensburg district. So I wanted to introduce myself to all of you. And I really hope to have the opportunity to work with you. I came to the Germana Foundation from Preservation Virginia. And I think that Preservation Virginia has had some opportunities to, to work with the citizens in Culpeper before. But it's, it's, Salubria, I mean, you've got the picture right back there. It's a absolutely stunning, unique resource that you have in this county. And one of the things that I'm really excited about in my early tenure with the Germana Foundation is to work with Culpeper to see how we can make this resource benefit the community in the largest way possible. And so as we are envisioning ways that we can do that, the best way to, to achieve our goals is, of course, to work with our stakeholders and our communities. And so the county of Culpeper is certainly one of the biggest stakeholders. And I hope to see you all and, and work with you in 2023 as we plan and see what we can make this resource do for the community. So nice to meet all of you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to come and speak during the citizen forum? Okay, not, we'll close the citizen forum and move on to the agenda. Any changes to the agenda tonight or entertain a motion to approve? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, general county business. We have two items tonight, subject to a public hearing this evening. First, the board will consider approval of an uncodified ordinance setting the dates for receipt of applications and hearing of biennial assessment challenges before the 2023 Board of Equalization. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. This evening, as the chairman just stated, we'll consider an uncodified ordinance, which is to establish certain dates related to the Board of Equalization. The Board of Equalization is established every other year during every reassessment year. The Board of Equalization, or BOE, accepts applications that may be made by property owners who are seeking relief and based on their objections to particularly identified property assessments that result from reassessments. So the BOE hears the concerns of those that think that their property's been improperly valued during the reassessment. Under this ordinance, really, the gist of it is to establish three specific dates. The first date is that the ordinance, if enacted, would set May 1, 2023, for the 2023 Board of Equalization to begin receiving applications. The second date would be June 16, 2023, as the final date by which property owners could make applications to the BOE for relief. And finally, the last date would be July 22, 2023, as the date by which the Board of Equalization must finally complete and conduct all its hearings and dispose of all its applications for relief. And that is pretty much the summary of it, Mr. Chairman. And as you also noted, it's subject to public hearing.
Thank you, John. Any questions or comments?
Just a brief comment. I would encourage us to look at moving to annual assessments this year. There is a lot of volatility in prices. There's a lot of volatility in interest rates. We will be doing constituents a favor if we move annually. Historically, I was on the other side, but at this point, with the volatility, whether it go to rules or whatever we do, now would be the time to start looking at annual assessments. Otherwise, I'm in complete agreement with the schedule. And thanks, staff, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Any other comments? Can I get a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm over here sleeping tonight. Yeah, this issue requires a public hearing. Go ahead and open the public hearing now. If anybody would like to come and speak on this issue. See you none? Go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up for discussion or a motion.
Move to approve the uncodified ordinance setting the dates for receipt of applications and hearing of the biennial assessment challenges before the 2023 Board of Equalization. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye? Oppose, a like sign? Okay. Okay. All right, moving on to 4.02. The board will hold a public hearing and consider approval of amendments to Chapter 12 for the technology zones of the Culpeper County Code. Go ahead and ask our county administrator, John Eggersen, to address this issue again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The technology zones are not, to be confused, with land use regulation or zoning. They are incentive zones that were created some years ago that allow certain types of uses that locate in those zones to qualify for various tax relief. There is a ordinance, which is what we're considering tonight, that does nothing more than essentially establish where the technology zones are located. There's also a policy which dictates what the actual tax relief is. And the board discussed both of these last month. And the policy was streamlined by our Economic Development Director. And that was adopted so that the policy's in place for what the tax relief would be. But again, tonight, we're looking at the zones themselves. And essentially, what we've done is gone through each of these technology zones and reviewed the parcels that are located in them. In some cases, parcels have been subdivided over the last several years, which means there's more tax map numbers involved. So sometimes there's changes in the text of the ordinance, which really don't change the physical location of the zones. But the easiest way for me to cover this tonight for the public's benefit and for yours is just to run through each zone and tell you where the changes are. So I'm gonna start with the zones as they appear in the ordinance and just go through each one in order and indicate what is proposed for adoption tonight. The first one is the Lover's Lane Technology Zone. This is an area out along Lover's Lane, of course, and does reach Route 3 as well, as indicated on the map. The only change proposed to this zone is that there are two areas that were previously in the technology zone that have since been boundary adjusted into the town of Culpeper. And we are suggesting that those be removed from the zone. Other than that, all the parcels that remain in the county would remain in the zone and no new parcels would be added. The second is the McDevitt Drive Technology Zone. The primary proposal here is basically to make no changes to the zone. It already included parcels both in and out of town. The only adjustment that's been made on this is to provide for a 100-foot buffer on parcel 41103 that surrounds the National Cemetery property. So that's reflected on this map and within the text of the ordinance. The third technology zone is the Brandy Station Technology Zone. That is a single parcel. There's only one parcel in the zone. And the current proposal and as drafted in the ordinance is to remove that parcel altogether so that it would no longer be a technology zone. The fourth of our technology zones is the Elkwood Technology Zone out around the airport and the airpark. This zone would shrink. There are two large parcels, 3464 and 3466, shown with the red stars there on the map. Those have gone into conservation easement since the zones were first established. And so they, they won't be developed. And it doesn't really make sense to keep that in the Elkwood Technology Zone. So those parcels would be removed. There would be no additional parcels added. And finally, the Bragg's Corner Technology Zone is unchanged from its current designation, other than, again, you may see some, some different tax map numbers, but that would just be a result of various subdivision or rearranging of lot lines. The physical location of the zone has proposed no changes. And that's, that's pretty much all you need to know, I think, about what's proposed this evening. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for John or comments before I open the public hearing?
Just a brief comment. And relative to the procedure, how we got here, as noted very clearly and as John explained very clearly, the proposal is to remove the Brandy Station Technology Zone from the maps. And we voted for that a month ago in a open session. And the vote was, a majority of this board voted to have that removed. So knowing where we are to advertise to have that removed. So noting where we are, that's where we're sitting and just adding a little bit of context. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay. This issue requires a public hearing for you to come and speak if you so desire. So go ahead and open the public hearing now for anyone that would like to come and speak.
If I'm understanding, oh, excuse me, Larry Green, Salem District. If I'm understanding Tom correctly, the, y'all voted before on the Brandy Station to remove it? Did I understand it correctly? I know you can't remember. Here's my concern with this. Before I retired, I owned a tractor trailer. Having parked in Stevensburg, a lot of times, say 1:00 in the morning, I might have cut through there if I was empty. When you go through there, you're gonna cross Mountain Run. Weight limit on that bridge, I think, is about 15 or 20 ton. Average traction trailer loaded with a yook or any other piece of equipment is gonna be hitting 100,000 pounds. So somebody's gonna have to pay for your bridge. If you come in from Brandy, no low boys would go across that bridge. Only other way you could get in there would be, let's see, if you came in the inlet and tried to cut down, you're gonna still tear all that road up. You're talking 100,000 pounds on the average, a low boy with a yook or what else on it. So I would hope you would consider removing that. It's not gonna be feasible for the developer or anyone else to go further with that development, unless they wanna build a whole, build y'all a whole new road system all the way through there. Take that consideration. I do wanna say, I think this year, y'all have done a pretty good job. Kept taxes at a reasonable rate. You kept us safe. And I want to thank you for your job.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to come and speak?
Good afternoon. I live in Brandy Station. My name's Pamela Davis. And I would like to say I totally support removing the tech zone. I must say that since I've come last, from last time, my road has been improved, and I would like to thank you. Because it wasn't for 20 years that there was no road improvement on Brandy Station. So thank you for doing that. And I mainly want to say, it is a community. Due to past events, I have learned about the people sitting behind me. And it is a very nice community that is diverse, all different ethnic groups and financial levels. And the more we can make it a better community, will make Culpeper County a better place. So I support removal of the tech zone.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Mark Wilks from the Stevensburg District. I also live in Brandy Station. As Pam just mentioned, we just, we've gotten to know each other over the past six months or so as we've walked through the data center issue. And you don't know how grateful we are that you are removing the tech zone from Brandy Station. It takes, just gives us a chance to take a deep breath and appreciate, you know, that you see the concern there. I also want to echo and thank you for the excellent job that you all have done. I've only been in Brandy Station or been in Culpeper, living here for about 12 years. And the reason we moved here is because of the excellence of the county. And I can tell you've fought hard to maintain that. And we wanna keep living here with that kind of excellence. Just a couple of points I'd like to make. I don't oppose progress. I think it's necessary. And we live in a world that is continually moving forward. But it doesn't, it has to make sense. And as we, as been discussed many times, there's really no infrastructure in Brandy Station to support data centers, to support, you know, tech zones. And then to put that kind of infrastructure would totally disrupt our lives. There would be power lines, there would be roads. It would, it would totally transform and change our community, not in a good direction. This is where we live. We've chosen to raise our families here. And many have deep roots in Brandy, going back to the 1800s. Others of us have only been there for a few years, but we have made this, all have made this home. My family and I moved here in 2010. My wife and I and our nine children made a conscious choice to leave Fairfax County and come to a county that more reflected our values and vision for living. When we built our house, it was with the intention of putting down deep roots for generations to come. We moved here with my nine children. My wife and I, we now have 17 grandchildren, two more on the way, and a bunch of daughter-in-laws and a son-in-law. So there's about 35 of us now that live in Brandy Station, in that community. And our family chose, we didn't move here to change Culpeper County. We moved here to enjoy and appreciate what Culpeper County had to offer and embrace it and support it and make it more of a place that people want to live. And our family chose to leave the fast-paced world of trying to keep up with the Joneses, which Fairfax County is full of, and embrace the quality of life in a different pace. We looked for a community that appreciated the value of relationships over the making of a buck. And we found that in Culpeper. For the past 12 years, we have worked very hard to establish a farm right across the street from this parcel that, you know, that all of our family works on. All my nine children, daughter-in-law, son-in-law, all work on the farm. And we support, we feed 2,000 families within the local area and support nine fam, nine local families from our farm. Having a data center and things change the way it's been proposed in the past would significantly affect our ability to stay living there and, and farm the way we do. I want to make it clear that we are not against data center. My time's up. Make it clear, we're not against it. However, tech zones and Brandy Stations don't make sense. And the, and the last thing I'll just say is there's no need. I don't see a need to compromise. And that's why I really appreciate the decision that's been made and the vote that was made to, on what's right for the residents of Culpeper over the fear of not having enough revenue in the future. I believe we will survive without having a technology zone here. As you all have done a great job in the past years showing us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Cameron Langdon. I live on Stevensburg Road. First, I'd like to thank you all for all the work that you all are doing for us and for the opportunity for us to speak here tonight. Yeah, I would just reiterate a lot of things that the community has been saying about removing this tech zone for all the reasons, the lack of infrastructure. removing this tech zone for all the reasons, the lack of infrastructure, the road that gentleman was just talking about, that road, Stevensburg Road is a horrible road. It's very narrow. The state has beat out, has deemed it unsafe for trucks. On each end of the road, they have big signs that seems not feasible to me to even have any kind of a, any more traffic on that road than there already is. I mean, it's dangerous, extremely dangerous road. I mean, I know people that live nearby and they won't even, they go around it just to avoid being on that road because it's so narrow, you know, any kind of truck. I also like to talk about the history of Brandy Station. And if any of you have not ever been to Fleetwood Hill, at the top of Fleetwood Hill, where they have a little, a short walking trail with signage, I'd encourage y'all to go there and take that little walk. There's a lot of signage there explaining all about the, of course, the battle. And there's also one sign in particular that talks about the view where Jeb Stewart had his command post there because it was on that little knoll. And it shows that you can see Hainsborough Ridge, Coles Hill. You could have seen the, the steeple of the church that would have been in Brandy Station at the time. The view has changed very little in the last, what is it, 150, 60 years? And I think that's very significant. I mean, that's one of the most significant battles that was ever fought on American soil. And for, for us to be able to go there now and to see what they saw then, instead of seeing warehouses and buildings and transmission lines and to save that, that view for generations to come, I think it'd be extremely important and something to, I hope you all give some thought to. Thank you. Please remove that and, and keep in mind the, with the comprehensive plan, the other areas that are similar in, in the lack of infrastructure on all those areas. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
Okay. All right. I am Sarah Parmley with the Piedmont Environmental Council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Piedmont Environmental Council has always supported directing growth in a thoughtful and controlled manner that enhances and improves our communities. Northern Virginia is currently experiencing an unprecedented, unprecedented amount of data center development, some of which can be very lucrative for individuals, but unless carefully planned and located, can be very detrimental to local communities and resources as well as trample on the rights of private landowners miles away from the site. Removing the Brandy Station tech zone does not remove the rights of the individual landowner or restrict his ability to apply for rezoning or special use permits. Removing this outdated technology zone does stop the county from incentivizing industrial development that is in direct conflict with the community vision for Brandy Station as an agricultural community with strong ties to local history. We strongly recommend that the Board of Supervisors remove the Brandy Station Technology Zone and only incentivize data center development in, in appropriate locations with the existing infrastructure to support them. In addition to the impacts on the immediate community such as noise, water, and construction traffic, any data center development in Brandy Station will necessitate the construction of a new transmission line through miles of private property. The construction would be at the expense of the electric ratepayers and not the developer. The data center developer would have no control over the transmission line route, which would be through private property and mostly through farmland. The route would be the decision of the utility. By incentivizing data center development in a location that lacks the essential infrastructure that county incentivizes, compromising the property rights of many landowners to benefit one landowner. We encourage the Board to remove the outdated and inappropriate technology zone from Brandy Station and to encourage, encourage data center development in locations that already have the proper infrastructure and community support. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Corey Clinton from Stevensburg District. And as we venture into 2023, I was sitting back here reflecting on 2022. And to summarize it, it was a very exciting year when you, when you think about all the planning commission meetings and the various meetings we had from our, our local community and Len Park and just various, various meetings. And what I came out of that was the many blessings that came, came about. One has been referred to is, is meeting the neighbors of Stevensburg District and the diverse, diverse community that we do have and which is a really strength. You know, that's one. And there was just a lot of uniting of the community. And really, when I think about it, it was all around the epicenter of, of Brandy Station. And out of that came a lot of history, understanding, you know, just how valuable and important Brandy, Brandy Station is to, to our history. So not only preserving and protecting that, I think this is just one, one small milestone by removing this from, as a tech zone. But I think we need to think beyond now as we're venturing to 2023, is what else can we do? Can we preserve it? Can we, can we incorporate any historical zonings, especially now we're looking at, you know, a national park in, in, you know, within the area? And just, I would encourage you all to start thinking about maybe even whatever we can do to that, whether a train stop, encouraging historical revitalization. But again, many blessings came out of that and I also encourage you to, to vote to remove this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Susan Ralston and I'm a resident of Stevensburg. I'm opposed to any... I'm watching with interest what's going on. I'm watching with interest what's going on with other neighboring counties who are also struggling with the onslaught of data center, of data centers on rural land. Yes, we need data centers, but rural communities are disproportionately impacted because of the lower cost of farmland and the inability of rural residents to fight big tech. I'm in favor of removing the Brandy Station parcel from the tech zone because of the visual blight, the construction traffic, noise, and imminent domain issues related to the transmission towers. There are other industrial areas, not residential, not agricultural, that make better sense for data centers. Residents don't want it and that should be enough. According to a recent comp plan data, 93% of those surveyed want to slow down the growth in the county. And I really hope we work together to have a balanced approach to growth in Culpeper that really keeps the county rural and beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Wilk. I'm from the Stevensburg District as well. I am also requesting that the Brandy Station Technology Zone be removed from the technology zone ordinance. Brandy Station has been a farming community and a historical landmark in Virginia and for generations. And it does not want or does, it does not need industrial-sized development that the technology zone could offer. Months ago, when we first heard about the Adotex proposed data center development project, my dad, Mark Wilks was up here a moment ago, took the time to talk to the people in our community. He wanted to decipher whether our neighbors would support such a project or not, what they thought about it. And everyone we talked to in the community of Brandy Station came, came back with a resounding answer that, no, we didn't want this. And this, this sentiment didn't change as we learned more and more about the project, but it just grew stronger as more details became available. Signs started showing up everywhere and we got over 1,200 signatures on our petition requesting that at midnight. The Brandy, why was this? Well, the Brandy Station community didn't want years of construction traffic that this would result in. They didn't want huge industrial-sized buildings replacing the beautiful farmland and natural landscape. They didn't want the likely damaging radiation... Wait, that benefits not just them, but the whole community.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, can you give us your name for the record? Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
There you go. Thank you. Dawn Haight, Stevensburg District. I want to wish each and every one of you a Happy New Year. May God continue to bless you and your families through 2023. The residents of Culpeper would like to give you one word to carry along with you throughout the year. That word is common sense. This word you can use in each and every decision that you make this year. We encourage you all to use it as much as, much as possible. In addition to that, please listen to the residents of Culpeper County that call this home. And I will give you the definition of common sense. Common sense. Your common sense is your natural ability to make good judgment and to behave in a practical and sensible way, period. Removal of the Brandy Station tech zone is an example of common sense. Why? Because Brandy Station tech zone lacks all the necessary infrastructure for light industrial. Actually, the term quote-unquote tech zone is misleading and should be changed to opportunity area. It, it misleads people to think that the county is welcoming light industrial in all technology zones. That is simply false. It's misleading because people think it's a green light to rezone agricultural to light industrial. Again, that is simply false. Please use your common sense to adopt county ordinances and policies that are in line with the Culpeper County Comp Plan. Use your common sense to preserve Culpeper for many generations to come. Each and every one of you are enjoying Culpeper because those who came before you used their common sense. Thank you and I hope you all have a pleasant trip home.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Justin Kuramoto. I live in the Stevensburg District in Brandy Station. Don't have too much to add that my neighbors, the community has said already. I just agree with the, I agree with the proposal to remove the tech zone. The infrastructure is just not there and the history of the community and Brandy Station is just so much too valuable to just develop over it with data centers and the like. And just wanted to wish you all a Happy New Year and thank you for your service. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Zachary Green of Brandy Station, Stevensburg Magisterium District. And I raise beef cattle and hay. And I'm opposed to data centers in Brandy Station. And I thank you all for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Anyone else? Last call. Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Open it up for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move to approve the amendments of Chapter 12, Article 16, Technology Zones of the Culpeper County Code.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I voted against advertising for this public hearing because I was concerned about the change relative to technology zones. Listening to the constituents, I'm, I'm still somewhat conflicted in the sense that, one, I don't believe in offering tax incentives for particular properties at the, because government says, here's where we want something to go. So the whole concept of technology zones itself, I have a problem with. So if we said we were eliminating all this, count me on board. Because the one that we've approved since we've been, or in the last several years, isn't even in a technology zone. Others have said, well, it needs to be in a technology zone where there's existing infrastructure. There is no existing infrastructure for a data center in a technology zone that we have. So we literally have no answer to that question with what we have right now. So looking at that, then I say, okay, there's also a landowner that has been bought property knowing that it was future-zoned industrial, had it put in a technology zone more than 15 years ago and has been working to try to get something done along those lines, very above board. And I feel bad for that owner. I also... I also look and say, well, wait, should a community that doesn't want something there literally have to come and speak against tax incentives for it? That doesn't make any sense either. So going through all of that, I kind of end up where I'm okay reducing technology zones. I wish it were down to zero, but reducing, in this case, I'm not sure is a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any other comments before I call the question?
Just one comment, Mr. Chairman, in regards to what Mr. Underwood just said, that the use of the technology zones is to try to draw the type of industrial development that you want, that's going to provide jobs, provide tax bases and those sorts of things that, that help us to be in the position that we are in right now in having the tax rates that we do have. But ultimately, when you're looking at, at data centers, you don't need tax incentives for data centers. They're going to come here, they're going to try to come here anyway because of the difference in the price of the land where they are putting them and what the price of land here is. So given the fact that the one that's been approved that certainly I didn't agree with, and I think it's in the wrong place, and I think that that'll prove itself to be a true statement over time, then there's no reason for anybody else to get any incentives on a data center, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm going to support the motion that's on the floor.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye, and raise your hand, please. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We have unanimous. Ms. Ellis? All right, we appreciate you all coming tonight, and we have no further planning commission business, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We're adjourned.